Well, sir. Yeah, being six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Kate Plumby Stewart's not gonna be able to be with us this evening, so I'll be chairing the meeting. We will go ahead and start with the approval of minutes. Are there any discussion or comments on minutes from August 7?
They look very nice to me. I would move that we accept them as presented.
Do you prefer the discussion? Call in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? And to approve? Right, board reports. Tracey?
I have nothing for this meeting.
Nothing, but I think there's a budget committee meeting coming up in the near future, so I will have something to report about.
Alice?
Um, the Enfield Village Association didn't meet in August, but on Friday, they had their business coffee at the Dartmouth Daling Club, where plans for the renovation were discussed, and Ed and Eric were there also. It was really informative, and the Mascoma Lake Association was represented, and they were asking questions about abating construction runoff into the lake, which was good. And then they also explained that the club likely won't be open for the 2024 season, and students will be practicing out of the facility insanity.
And the planning board, last meeting, we had the kickoff with Place Sense, who's the subcontractor for rewriting the zoning. So that was, this meeting is more about scheduling and expectations, but they got that kicked off. And then one thing that came up relative to a number of things that sort of falls in our lap, to think about is a better understanding and clarification of the sewer agreement with Lebanon. So that's something we should consider having it. There's not like a clear one page, here's what it is. So it's something that was brought up that we should consider putting together, and falls to us to communicate to people. To the town managers' report.
Here it is. Hey, on the staffing front, the Enfield Police Department continues to look for two police officers. I'm continuing to work with the chief. We passed some notes back and forth today on a bonus program to see if we can get some people to apply. So we've been researching what other towns around us and around the state have been doing to make sure that we're in the ballpark of what everybody else is doing. Other than that, we still have an open ground position, but we're not, we're not looking real hard right now. We do have a temporary person that's filling that position that's doing a good job. So we'll continue looking at that and possibly re-advertise and repall. Other than that, all positions are filled. Back to that. Public Safety Building, Whitney Hall projects, we received an initial estimate for Whitney Hall. As expected, the budget came back a little bit high. The M back in Breadlow for working on some value engineering at the time to cut costs while maintaining the functions of the proposed renovation and expansion plan. Right now, we're looking at what a floor plan would look like to keep the elevator shaft and possibly the vaults in the same location, since those are big expenses to demolish and remove them. But, you know, if we can keep the elevator shaft and replace the elevator in it, it can save us a lot of money while working around that. So looking at a few of those different options to be able to still build the building that we, we had proposed, or something very similar can stay within budgets after the large inflation. The other thing that we did do that increased the cost of that building is we decided early on that we were gonna incorporate the option to put heat pumps in it that were part of the original plan. As of now, we're sticking with that, that plan to keep those. I think it's better for the long term of the town to do that. And then I'm also working right now with the Shaker Museum and Library to possibly secure a location at Los Solet for leasing for the town offices and library. I emailed today. They have a board meeting tomorrow, which I hope they discuss it. But we're, we're looking at the possibility of leasing the gift shop building and, I guess, the assembly hall next to that cafeteria type area. And we believe that those two buildings would work well for the town offices and library. And then there's also some extra room for storage. So we'll continue, continue looking at that option. And then other than that, we've started the, the arduous task of cleaning out Whitney Hall and starting to prepare to pack and, and to move that building. So set aside a little bit of time every week to work with the, the library, the historian, and others throughout the building to, to pack and look through old records and see what we need to keep and not keep. Start preparing for the move. So that's really the Public Safety Building, Whitney Hall, still working with the attorney to draft up the purchase and sale agreement for the Shaker Hill Granite site. There. The two contractors are working hard trying to get prices and repricing things, trying to get better prices. So they're, they're doing a lot of work behind the scenes. On the broadband front, I received an email from Hub 66. They contacted me to let me know that they're working with Liberty Utilities right now, trying to get some information back, but they have a plan of expanding the First Light Broadband Fiber here in Enfield, now that they've kind of taken over. They're working with First Light. They took over. Who was the other company? I forgot who it was.
Bestrains?
What?
Bestrains?
No. The legal.
Oh, oh, Y, Y Valley.
Y Valley. They took over all of Y Valley's network, so now they pretty much own the broadband internet. Ethernet, or not Ethernet, but fiber here in town. So they will be expanding that. I don't have a lot of details on that, but I'll be working with them in the future to understand more where they're expanding to. That's good news to the town. And just wanted to highlight the urban compack that we talked about again last, last meeting. I did not put it on the agenda for discussion today, but as we heard, Tinbird Properties had moved forward with looking at the survey and topography of that area to learn a little bit more exactly what would happen in their area. Other than that, I've worked with DPW, and they're, they're starting to put together some numbers of what it might, might look like if we decided to move in that direction. So there's work going on in the background, but we won't be discussing it at this meeting. I'm hopeful that we'll have a little bit more information to re-engage in that discussion at the next meeting. The Methodist Hill Property Use Committee had their first meeting this last week. At the meeting, we reviewed the property, set up the organization of the board, and they scheduled meetings through November to discuss options for the properties with the stakeholders identified by this select board and the committee. We hope to have a recommendation back to the select board in early 2024. Shed Street, we had five contractors show up last week to the Shed Street walkthrough. We expect a couple more than that to provide bids, so we do expect a, a pretty good number of bids for abatement and demolition of the Shed Street properties. And hopefully, we have that either completed or under contract to be completed by the end of this year. Strategic planning, I've been working on a draft of the strategic plan with Russ. Again, I want to bring this up so you guys don't think it just got dropped after our retreat. We've been passing back and forth a draft. I also have a meeting scheduled this week with my executive staff and a couple other members to, to go through the facilities and infrastructure section and the technology and efficiency section to kind of do the same, same strategies that we did during that retreat and, and come back to you guys with some, some strategic goals or not. I guess I wouldn't call them goals at this point, but strategic objectives in those areas. And I'll also be working with staff to put some goals, projects, and tactics behind the strategic objective you guys came up with before we bring that plan back. So that's continuing to move forward as well. DPW, you guys may have seen them if you drove past Shaker Ballfields today, but DPW was out installing 18 posts for the storybook walk that we got a grant from the Eastman Foundation to put in. So that'll be going in around the ball fields there. We think it's gonna be a great place, not only for the story walk, but for people when they have kids that are practicing or playing games at Shaker Ballfields, so they can, they can take the littler ones on that, that walk around the story walk. So we look forward to that project being kicked off, and we thank the Eastman Charitable Foundation for paying for that project. Other things in the DPW realm, the Maple Street Water Project, we're just working on the punch list. We had a meeting last week to kind of finalize some of the things they need to clean up and fix before that project is, it's considered substantially complete now, but before it's finally completed. The Waterwell Project, we're still working towards getting some pump tests going, so that, that's continuing to move forward slowly. The July, July storms. I think I already covered that one, but we did get a federal disaster declaration for the July storm, so we continue to, to work on that front, making sure we recoup the money that we, we spent responding to that storm. The TV work on the sewer system has been completed now, and they're pretty much writing their report and making recommendations of what we can repair to make the system better. So we're looking forward to that report coming in, so we can create a project punch list of things to do. The RRF by the school, we talked about this a little bit last meeting, the lights at the crosswalk. Pathways Consulting is working right now on scheduling an onsite meeting with DOT to discuss the lighting requirements for that crosswalk. We're continuing to work on that. As I stated, I'm pretty sure they will not be put in before school starts, but we'll continue working on that project. Um, the Christmas storm that we had with the, the ice storm and the rain, the town has been approved and will be receiving $9,142.30, a 75% cost share for the work, for the debris removal and work on that storm. So we're, we've gotten approval, and that check should be written anytime, so we should be receiving that soon. The well pumps pretty much have been replaced and fixed. Prior one well had pumps, pipe, and electrical components replaced, and it should be back online this week. So we're almost back to having all our well pumps back online. Johnson Drive Property, DPW was out there last week. They demolished the sheds and the trailer at the Johnson Drive Courier Landing Site. We're awaiting legal to come back, so we can finalize the recommendation from the select board and determine what we're gonna do with the two actual structures that are there. And then there was a leak repaired at the end of Well Street. It's been leaking for some time, but the DPW finally got in there. They found that it was a lead service pipe between the main line and the, the shut off the curb stop there, so they completely replaced that line. Everybody's been busy. That's my report.
I didn't mention that we had a CIP meeting, so I didn't know if you were gonna touch on that.
Um, I can a little bit. We had our first CIP meeting. We organized the board. We talked about the projects from last year, that where we were at, what we were working on. Later on, on your agenda, there was one presentation by DPW asking to buy a lease floer. We'll talk about that a little bit more. But we had our first meeting, and we're preparing with staff right now. They're filling out their CIP request, and we'll be moving forward into next year's CIP request or the next few years' CIP requests.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick question. You had said that the pipe replacement was a lead pipe. How prevalent are lead pipes in the system still?
I think we've removed most of them, but we still come across them every now and then.
We don't have to know where they are.
No, I'm sure most of the ones we know, we've gotten out of the system, and we'll run across them every now and then.
Is it the answer? Move on, Kenakin.
Uh, just a question. Are, we focused on using the town-acquired property to further housing and development? I mean, what we should be doing is first looking at what we're going to use that property for. Before we go looking for other uses, we should look at housing. We should look at some development.
I think the short answer is yes, but a slightly longer answer is how are we looking with that public comment section?
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I know.
I won't have to give a public comment.
Yeah.
I already did it.
No, no, no. That, that is a very good public comment. The short answer is that, yeah, all these committees are looking at wide varieties of potential uses before making recommendations. And that's part of the slow and deliberate nature of these things. So, but yes, we can talk about that with that. Communications, there are not any at this time, so we'll go on to what I think is brought some of the audience the business of the evening, starting with the short-term rental ordinance discussion. I forget when this was drafted, but we have a drafted ordinance. Do you mind?
Yeah. This was actually initially drafted when Ryan Ailesworth was still here. Rob worked with him on that. Shortly after I started, Rob brought it to my attention. After I settled in a little bit, we spent some time debating it. It was, I was telling Brad Rich the other day, it was actually kind of on. I put my investor hat on, and we went back and forth, back and forth, trying to find an ordinance that kind of found that middle ground. And so we, we wrote this, and last year, I'd say about this time, it may, may have been a little bit, little bit off from this time, but we brought it forward to the select board. We had a discussion about the short-term rental ordinance. It brought a few people out. I had some phone conversations with residents and landowners, homeowners here in town. We ended up kind of pushing this to the planning board to discuss. They looked it over. They talked about it and decided that it was, it really was not in their realm. So it's coming back to the select board. It took a little while to get back here. I did talk with the attorney a little bit about it, and he, I think he kind of, he was in between the two too, but he said it was close to mimicking a zoning ordinance. So whatever we decide, it will need to go in front of town meeting to be, to be finally determined or accepted.
So the ultimate process would be finalize a draft, public hearings, and then a vote tab.
Yes.
And that would be a Tuesday or a Saturday vote. On the ballot or discussion?
One of them likely would be on the ballot, like the other zoning rules, but I'll get that clarified before we get there.
Okay, so initial discussion from the board?
I think for, I have a little bit of knowledge of it. I think I attended the discussion that was held back in October, but Alice was not here certainly. So I think for her purposes, it may make sense for one of you selectmen to perhaps bring Alice up to speed as to what was discussed, the background of the ordinance.
I can do a little bit more.
Yeah.
With that, I did want to bring it up that we, last year, we brought this forward stating, you know, there's a lot of towns across the state, across the country, that are having issues with short-term residences. And, you know, some of them are becoming major problems, and some towns, the cities, and some are, are not yet. But they're, they're discussing them, and we were trying to get ahead of the curve last year. We really hadn't had many problems. There may be a few homeowners here to speak this year, because I've gotten a lot more calls this year with people being concerned. I don't know if it's becoming more, more prevalent around our area, or if people are just noticing it a little bit more. But I have had multiple calls this year with some concerned citizens of short-term rentals in their area. So with it, it was just that. I know the Conway area had really big problems with short-term rentals, to the point where they were trying to ban them townwide. And, you know, that didn't go well in the court systems. There's been some back and forth. And really, what we tried to write was more, it's a little bit more of a registry, but it covers, if you read through it, you know, fire safety, parking issues, a lot of the issues that we're gonna have, you know, in the neighborhood, and make sure that they're safe, and they're abiding by town laws and rules, state laws and rules.
Quite a bit of it relates to the safety of the people who are renting the facility.
Yes.
You know, such as not, not renting out a basement, right? Doesn't that, and easy egress or things of that nature. And part, part of, of the concern has been the impact upon neighbors and the neighborhood in general. So I, I think this does address, it seems a little rigorous, you know, at first glance, but I think it does address some very important issues. Safety, neighborhood, community values. Are there comments from the public? Yes. Please say your name. Our minute taker's gonna do it from the recording, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have said that earlier.
I can change something on my, later. Okay. So just so I get this right, so the original draft that was published that, on the website, is that, is there a new draft?
No, that is the draft.
It's the same draft.
I don't believe there have been any changes to the draft at this point.
Okay. All right, so, so then the process, Nick.
So the process?
Public hearing?
Well, so the process would be that if we wanted, if the select board wanted to make edits to the draft that was put forth, there would be a public hearing on it, and it would be, it sounds like, most likely, if the Tuesday vote, the ballot vote at town meeting. So there'd be more discussions of it as we go forward, but I'm very interested to hear particularly what the challenges people have run into are. Because a big piece of this is, you know, anytime you want to put in some regulation, what problem are you solving? And there's multiple things that have been said. Some are anecdotal, some are very well-based in experience. And certainly, some of the anecdotes I heard are not addressed in this draft, but some are. And so I'm very interested to hear, you know, from people what their experiences are, if people would like to share, not to put anybody on the spot. Go ahead, Brad.
Brad Rich.
Can I speak?
We'll go to you next.
Okay.
When I, when I took a look at this ordinance the first time, I was against it, to be honest with you. I, I thought that it sort of infringed on a homeowner's right to be able to rent their home and collect revenue for whatever purposes. But I think from what I've seen on Crystal Lake and from talking to some friends on Mascoma Lake, I think that the ordinance is reasonable. In particular, it has a clause where it states there's got to be somebody within 30-minute drive that can be contacted. I think that's critical, or a property management company would have to be involved, some of those things. I think what we're seeing here is, you know, a three-bedroom place where 20 Dartmouth students show up with, with 10 cars.
Okay.
And I, I think that that happens especially on Mascoma. And there's other issues too, everything from water safety. I think that what happens is that renters rent, and obviously, that they make their boats available to the renters. And I would say most of the time, it's probably fine, but some of the time, I don't think it is, and I think there's safety issues there. And lastly, I would say that I think we need to make it fair to the bed and breakfasts in town and hotels and motels that have to pay state taxes, and a lot of these places are not, they're, they're not, you know, doing their share of that. So just my two cents.
That's very well put.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, I can't see your name on the screen, so yes, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Wallace. I live at 47 Buttonon on Crystal Lake. And I read the draft, and I genuinely thought it was appropriate, but there were a couple of things that concerned me. One was, we talked about bedrooms, the number of bedrooms in a home being the deciding factor as to the number of guests. I, I do rent my house short-term. So, but it didn't talk about other options, like if you have a bunk room, or if you have a loft, or if you have a studio. There are other sleeping arrangements besides a bedroom that the ordinance didn't seem to consider. So that was a concern for me. I thought it would be more reasonable to, to have the number of beds in a place, especially if you're going to have inspections or whatever, because then you know how many viable, safe sleeping places you have. The other piece is, I mean, I know, we have a large, I have a very large family. And when my children come, I may have my son and his wife and two children sleeping in a bedroom, because they can all fit in a king-size bed. That would be against what you stated. So I, I think that at first spike, it looks, you know, okay, but I think that there has to be a little bit, I would like it to be a little bit more thought giving into, you know, how it would be administered. On the other fact, when I first moved here, about five years ago, just when we got the tax bill for the new school, and basically, that was a huge whopper. So I, I feel a little bit concerned when people talk about the tax that hotels and whatever pay, because my tax bill was, is like everybody else's, was impacted extremely based on the new school. So, I mean, us poor homeowners, we're getting hit with a lot of taxes as well. So I think that having the option of doing something to help offset those taxes should be a consideration as well, not just for the motel owners or the hotel owners. So those are my points. Again, my name is Carolyn Wallace. I live at 47 Buttonon, and I hope that they will be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carolyn. One thing we can probably clear up is this would only apply when people are renting. So if you have a family visit, this would not apply to that. So it would only be when money's changing hands, unless, of course, you're charging your family to visit you, which is probably not the case.
Yes, go ahead. With that, I just wanted to clarify the determining occupancy off the bedrooms. We did have quite the discussion on this area. We had the exact discussion that pulled out couches, all these different locations you can sleep, but the septic systems are rated off the number of bedrooms in a house.
Yeah.
And we have experienced issues of failing septic systems because they're overcrowding the houses.
Yeah, but, but that may be something to consider, where certainly, this would apply to people who are on town sewer, who would not have that issue. And certainly, if somebody chose to invest in a septic system.
There's still a development charge based upon the number of bedrooms.
Okay, no, that's, that's a good thing to clarify. You know, but yes, a lot of that is, is around to expand. Okay, yes.
Okay, so in reading that initially, you, you have to balance property rights versus what communities need in order to maintain, you know, the idyllic lifestyle. We have 33 units in our association. We have a few on the lake. I think there's six or seven. We've had very little problems, and any problems we've had, except one of the rentals, has, you know, we've satisfied it. But I think what you have to do also is to take a look at, at how intrusive, you know, it's intrusiveness. How intrusive do you want to be? I know for a fact that most people in here would not like somebody coming into their house and doing a due diligence level of inspection. I mean, coming in and saying you don't have a bedroom in a basement where there isn't ingress, egress. You have a fire alert system, you have other things that are necessary for health and safety. Those are essential. We shouldn't even, we shouldn't even discuss those. We can, all we should do is say we need them. Now, how, how do you, how do you get into this inspection? So think about the, I'm, I'm a big liability guy. Think about the liability to the town. You go in and you inspect a place, and you say, okay, it's great. And then all of a sudden, there's a pop or something, and something's missed. You miss a, a smoke detector. You miss this, you miss that. You, you have to consider all these things that are maybe completely outside of what you normally would, you know, think. The other thing is, you know, it, it's kind of a matter of, we have a great community out there. You know, we're, you know, everybody is, you know, we were open, we discussed, and we talked to Carolyn, we talked to neighbors. We don't rent, well, we rent long-term to a, a woman who's there in one of our places, but we don't rent. And I have no problem with somebody renting. And any problems you have, it seems like there should be a And any problems you have, it seems like there should be a method in this of solving the problems. I agree that 30 minute routine, you know, if you're going to have a place, you should have somebody that can come there and satisfy a requirement. Noisy people, uh, you know, drunken type things. And last but not least, I mean, uh, Roy has said many a times, you know, just give us a call, there's not much we can do. But we can come up and calm things down if anything, if anything happens. So I think these are all things and I think you should have people that rent and don't rent, on the lake, not on the lake. I think you should have a committee to go through these things and establish what you want. Don't forget, right now there are 16 towns in the state of New Hampshire that do not allow rentals. There's 36, I think, or something like that, that have regulations. I think maybe reaching out and saying, getting a list of these things and seeing how they work. This is not a, a process to take lightly. Because what you're doing, once again, is affecting property values, you're affecting, you know, people's income sources. And I don't know how intrusive you want to be with the taxing thing. That's, that's our responsibility. They, you know, we don't have anything to do with the taxes. Now, we may get a couple bucks out of it from the state, but these are all things. So I think let's tread carefully, but do the right thing.
Discussion from the board?
I think that, uh, the way this is written, uh, it is a little confusing. I think it's a, a bit overbearing, uh, in its initial approach. Uh, I'm concerned about some of the definitions, uh, conflicting with the first paragraph right away. It says bed and breakfasts are excluded. Is a bed and breakfast a place you rented overnight and put a box of donuts on the counter? I'm concerned about, uh, the overloading of the septic systems, yes. But on the other hand, this town does not have an ordinance to inspect all septic systems. And certainly I wouldn't want to put the onus on our building inspector to say that a septic system is or isn't sufficient. Because that's a very complicated situation. I'm also concerned about the fact that we have recently allowed our ordinance, uh, our zoning to increase to allow a second EDU at residences. Now, some of these are being built presently, I think, and planned others, uh, to allow for some income for these folks. I want people to remain in their homes. I want them to be able to make some income at their properties, if at all possible, to pay the bills so that they can stay there. So I see some of this as conflicting with an occupancy of an ADU. Is an ADU short term rental? Is it long term? What's the purpose of building the ADU, I think can be a little conflicted. And I wouldn't want to inhibit that because we've given them by zoning the right to create two ADUs on their property. So I fear a little bit that while it's well meaning, a lot of this ordinance may be a problem chasing a problem that doesn't exist. I'm not sure, and I haven't heard clearly, that there is an issue in this town with regard to short term rentals. Someone had mentioned parking on Mascoma Lake. Quite frankly, I live on Mascoma Lake, full disclosure. I have a full time property that I rent out on a one year lease, nothing short term. I go down Shaker Boulevard almost every day. I've never seen an overload of cars that block the road or cause any issues. If we want to have a parking ordinance, I think that's appropriate. But I think we ought to chase the cause of the problem, which is the parking issue. It's not necessarily because of a use, you know, people staying there. And I wouldn't want to fault someone who rents to a bunch of students. I've never seen that happen anyway. So I, I'm a little uncomfortable with a lot of this ordinance. I think in principle, it's good, it's correct. But I haven't yet heard the problem clearly, frankly. And I'd rather see the problem quantified, investigated, and let's identify what the issue is, whether it's here, on Mascoma or on Crystal, and I strongly suspect it doesn't exist anywhere else in town. So that's the other thing. Are we being unfair to lake folks? So that's where I am. I'm a little unclear on the need, quite frankly.
Yeah, I think I, I agree with the treading carefully approach. I know that in the town that I grew up in, which was a tourist town, um, they did prohibit short term rentals. And I'm not quite sure how they got there. And I would love to understand how we could not get there as well, maybe. Understanding the problem more first, hearing from the public about successes and challenges of short term rentals in this town.
Well, I'm a, a big private property rights person. I, I really do believe that this is something that we really need to address. Maybe not in as much rigorous detail as we have addressed it. I think that, you know, a public hearing or two might give us some feedback. But I, I do think there is, there's a, a, a bit of a problem. And what we're worried about is that problem becoming worse step by step. And there needs to be a way of communicating with people and having some general guidelines for people. So I, I'm in favor of pursuing this.
No, I, I already agree with that, 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 um, that's what we want to next steps to be.
I have a question. Carolyn Hughes, 17 star.
Yeah.
On when your property card has your property card, um, for taxes, doesn't your, your bedrooms have to line up with your septic?
Correct. Ideally, yes.
Yes, but as, as this is written, that's what would define the number of bedrooms in a property.
Okay.
Would be what's on the top property card.
Okay, cause I, my concern is that there could be a lot of properties that are allowing more people than should be there. And being on a lake, I do worry about septic system.
Good point. Yeah. Dan.
Mine is just a logistical thing here. If you're going to make this a zoning ordinance, then it needs to get to planning by mid-November.
Yeah.
So, because we're the ones that have to hold the public hearing and the public hearing is set by the state as to when we can hold. So just, I want it out there.
I don't think you're ever going to get this done by November.
That, that may be, but we can, we can at least decide on our next steps now. Yeah. My, my suggestion is going to be that we take what we've heard tonight, revise the draft.
But just to add to that, I think we've, I think we've got to the point that it's not a zoning ordinance, but it's going to act very similar to that, but it's a select board ordinance. Because most of it, not all of it, will be, I guess, more enforced by the police department with overcrowding and those types of things. Parking, but it's, it's going to work very similar. And that's why it went to the planning board last year and came back to the select board this year.
You shake your head, Dan.
I, I just don't know how you're going to have a vote on it then. In, in order to put it on the ballot for Tuesday, it's got to be a zoning ordinance. If you want to do a selectman's ordinance, go right ahead and do it, as that's what we said as a planning board was. This is not a zoning issue. This is, this, you know, it's not a planning issue. This is a safety issue from our point of view. So it, you know, in order for it, in order for the planning board to put that on the ballot, it has to go through the planning board and it has to go through the state's, um, calendar. So I just assume the select board did it.
Why not?
Right.
Yeah.
Because you want something that'll pass. Like any other ordinance.
So my suggestion is that we take, uh, what we heard tonight, provide Ed comments. Could you provide, uh, the, the word version to us that marked that up? Would that be the easiest for you with track changes?
I can do that.
And then we could send them back to you as individuals and you can sort of compile what we've done. Does that sound like a reasonable path forward for everyone?
No, I, I'm opposed to that.
Okay.
I believe that we should have a public meeting to discuss the issue, uh, in general, without necessarily having an ordinance. I would like to hear from the public on what their opinions are to the institution of any sort of an ordinance relative to short term rentals. Before we impose a rental on which the public has to react. Because I believe the ordinance is going to be based more on what the public wants than what we impose on them upfront.
I think we have heard from a number of people on both sides already that has been brought forth multiple times over the last four years. So I think from my point of view, we've sort of heard the, there's a need, um, for something. And I, I agree, we want to have public meetings about where it is, but we already have a draft out in public. So it's kind of hard to have a conversation without having a specific draft be, be part of the conversation, but we already have one.
Yeah, I think we should, as you said, provide Ed with our feedback. And once we've got that straight, then we can present this in some public fashion.
You know, you don't want a solution hunting a frog.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's the worst way to do things. And what you have to do, I think, is find out what the problems are. You know, some people don't have any problems. You know, some people have people living next to them, they don't have any problems. Then there's other people that, you know, they got late night rowdiness or whatever. So I think somehow, some way, we have to find out what a problem, maybe sending out a, whatever they do. Whenever we were doing the zoning, you'd have, that asked questions and chimp mail or John, a monkey mail or whatever the hell it was, that people would, uh, you know, put suggestions or issues that they have, you know, maybe that might be a help. Let's see how many problems are out there, you know, before we, you know, kill the goose.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think come what may, sooner or later, we're going to have something.
Yeah.
Even if it's something as simple as there has to be someone in charge, right?
Right.
But it's going to be more than that. Yeah.
Safety is the main.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, no, we can, we, we can choose how to run the process. That's what it comes down to. I guess, I guess I'll, I'll stay in them, you know, we have a draft, it's out in public, you know. Frank, you know, having, having a conversation around what has already been published makes sense to me. And revising that, uh, I guess part of it is, again, for me, like, I mean, if Ryan drafted this, that was three years ago, four years ago. This has sort of been simmering, um, but, uh, so let's start with just, do we want to provide new feedback on a new draft or start over? I guess those are sort of the two. Revise this draft or just start over? Those are, I think, the two options that we sort of.
I really think we should work with this. You know, starting over, you might just end up with the same thing. You know, unless we set ourselves the goal of, okay, we're going to have something that only has five points. I don't think we're there.
And it sounds like you'd like to start over, Tracy.
I would start over and I'd like Bob's suggestion to be taken up as far as the survey is concerned to identify the problem.
And, um, how about you, Alice?
I, I am really interested in hearing, uh, public comment about understanding the problem and the need for it, but I also don't think that we should start it now. We should work on the draft.
Okay, so straw poll, three of us like the idea of working with the draft. Everybody likes getting public comments. Would it, I guess I can't really put the next agenda together, but would it make sense to have a, in the essence of time, would it fit our schedule to have essentially, it may not be a public hearing, but a, something at our next meeting where people could come? And then we would provide comments on the draft to you for the second meeting from now?
We can get some out there.
I mean, because you can send us this right away. We, I would, I would start editing it right away, but then, you know, that way, within a month, we'd have a second draft. Which would, if it ended up being zoning, would fit that schedule. And we'd also know relatively quickly if we just have a can of worms and we want to slow down and take time off. Are you capable with that, Tracy?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Okay.
We can vote.
Yes, that's our option.
I move that we, uh, go ahead with Eric's proposal.
I'll second.
Okay, for the discussion on that. Call in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so three to one, we'll move forward with a public discussion on the next agenda and a revision of the existing ordinance.
I will send you guys the document and we'll, this might not be the exact wording, but we'll,
Yeah.
we'll notice a hearing for public comment, not a public hearing, if you will, so it's a little more official than just on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and there are probably some groups in town that could, would appreciate a, you know, from Eva to the lake associations to, there's probably a few other groups that would, uh, Eastman, please, like, create a notification of, of this discussion.
Okay. We can haul curtains. Are these the stage curtains we're talking about?
These are the stage curtains and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa.
And, and those are, those have historical interest, do they not?
No.
No?
The curtain does, and we believe that.
Okay.
This is just the big, heavy, black curtain curtains.
Say bye bye.
Are these ones that we, whatever, is it, I, I know people want the painted historical curtain. But I've never heard anyone mention these elements by any practice in that.
So this is a large blackout curtain that is in front of the stage?
Yes, it's the ones they draw closed and then they're doing the performance.
So this, they, these are not curtains on the windows themselves?
Right.
It's the large blackout curtain. Do you know if it's flameproof?
I have no idea anything about it.
Very old.
It's just a black curtain. Big black, it's just a large blackout.
Red, uh, on the dark red on the sides, but it's.
Yeah, it's the big, heavy.
Door.
The Heritage Commission care?
We could ask them.
Maybe just ask them.
They want to keep it for some reason. I don't know what we would do with.
I think whatever.
Representative to the Heritage Commission, I feel like I should say, oh, do they?
Not a hundred percent determined that the fate is going away, yeah.
And I know there was discussion of keeping the, I don't even know how to describe it, but the historical painted, yeah.
It's, it's called grand drain.
Grand drain, okay, the grand drain, that's a feature of the, but.
Oh, I would not part with that.
No.
And we can hold on to the curtains, um, until we've determined exactly what we're doing with the space.
Good idea.
Yeah.
But I did.
I think the answer to the question is, um, we're not sure if we want it and the Shaker Bridge Theater can't have it right now. So we know later.
And it would be good to just check with the Heritage Commission if there's something about those curtains that we don't know. I don't think there is, but. Exactly. Okay, tax deed. Do we have to go through each of these? Is that?
I think I would. I know some information about some of them.
Now, the sign at eight, New Hampshire Route 4A, that present, the sign presently says, uh, under agreement.
It's under contract, supposed to close on the 29th. If you guys decide to take these, it would be taken on the 30th or so, if they close before that.
Then we would not take it.
Right.
If they close on the 29th, they can write a check to the town and they'll be fine.
And if there's a delay and we had said to take it, not that lawyers caused delays, certainly not, um, we would wind up taking it despite the potential for someone to be able to sell.
They'd still have a chance to buy it back, but there would be some extra fees.
They, they would have to pay all the fees that are already there, all of the back due taxes, which they have to do on closing anyway.
Right.
The added fee would be basically the noticing costs that are incurred when we tell them we've deeded the park.
Yeah.
So can we postpone this for a short period of time after their potential closing? We cannot.
We'd have to restart the whole process.
We would have to restart the process. All right, so they're under a death warrant to not close.
Well, there is a letter in your packet asking.
I saw.
The delay.
But if we choose, if we chose the delay and you have to start the.
Yeah, probably end up pushing it.
You know, do we want to do it to vote on them individually or as a slate, just discuss them and?
It's up to you guys. You can discuss them and if you decide to do the same thing with all of them, you could take them as a slate. If you wanted to act independently, you could.
Okay, so is the discussion of ten twenty six to end for Route four eight, map thirty nine lot three?
My only question is, who is presently living there?
We know who presently owns it. We don't know who's.
Do we know if it's occupied?
It is, but I don't know that for sure. But I do think you should, I mean, you should act. On behalf of the town.
Right.
You know, we need to treat these all the same as possible. There's some extenuating circumstances with some, them being under contract.
Right.
Others not, that can come into play, but.
Uh, what's the situation with First Life Fiber? Uh, why haven't they paid that small amount?
I don't know, but I did just mention that, that I should reach out to my contact I've been working with on the lease to see. Make sure that they've been getting their notices, but it's been mailed to the same place as all the tax bills go that they're supposed to go to.
And they are, what's their relationship to Hub sixty six? I'm unclear on that.
First Life Fiber owns the large broadband that comes into DBW and then Hub sixty six. Comes off of that to the home.
All right, so they own the hub that's upstairs.
And they own the big main artery line that goes through town.
Um, there's no chance that if we do this, they shut something off, is there?
Don't know. I can't speak for them. I can definitely say I was going to get in contact with them tomorrow if we decide to report. Even if we don't, because it's a small amount of money. If I actually have to pay.
Yeah, some of these amounts are very. Leg- negligible.
These are only the oldest ones and there are, you know, other years.
There are other years.
But this is what's causing the deed.
Okay.
Yeah, these are, these are far enough behind in years, non-scholarity value to.
Do I look at non-payment of a twenty twenty lien of six hundred fifty four dollars?
And so is there any evidence on eleven dogs will weigh map twenty two lot five dash two?
I do have information on that one. May or may not weigh in. Shoulders did not weigh in, but, um, this person was in today, made a three hundred and fifty dollar payment, I believe. But spent just not, gets them off. They have another three hundred and two dollars and something cents to be caught up of the last year. Dealing. If they pay that three hundred and two, then they'll be current enough not to be on the dating list.
And they had till September thirtieth.
Yep.
To do that.
August.
August third.
August third.
Then, again, caution. Not being. Even in bear with everybody. They're giving them the same.
Yeah, and I mean, unless there's a. Liability reason not to move forward. Uh, which I don't hear or know of any of these properties. And knowing that the. The one has a very real possibility of settling before it happens. I'm in favor of moving forward and paying everybody fairly. Around town. It's a bummer, but one of those things we have to do.
Yeah, I think this is one of the most unpleasant things we have to do, but if you can get down to it, I guess I have to agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and I keep thinking, well, is there some extenuating circumstance here, right? And if, if, if we had one, we'd grab it.
Yeah.
We don't have one. So. I move that we, uh. Go with all of these as presented.
Moving on to the second. Well, second, okay, I will second that discussion of moving forward with all of these. Tracy or Alice, do you have? Comments? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero in that.
Okay, budget priorities.
We did this last year.
Don't spend money.
That might be a priority. I mean, that's really it. I just want to come forward to you guys to have a discussion. We went through last year. We know we had a fairly happy increase from. From what happened and just wanted to, to get the board's feedback on. Projects they might like to see. Not spending money, priorities, whatever, whatever priorities come to your mind. So as we move forward with the CIP fund and the, the budget committee that we can, we can have this discussion. That the select boards actually has this discussion before we move forward. And it helps me as I prepare the budget.
We have two, you know, very large building projects. And those have to be the priority for us. And, you know, even the, uh, addressing the sewer issues that will have been discovered by the TV cameras. That's probably going to be a pretty pricey issue and that's very important that we address that.
I'm also concerned about getting complete water well development done.
Yeah, yeah.
And if necessary, we need to look beyond that even.
So those are, you know, infrastructure is, is the big ticket, I think, for us.
I do think. A large part of what needs to happen on the sewer project was in the bond that was already packed before. We didn't pay one point nine million dollars for the cameras, so.
Good point. Thank you.
Three D.
Alice, do you have?
Yeah, I think this will be, uh, my first budget season as select board member, so I wonder, you know, at the end of the day. What, what will the final? Outcome be? And, you know, can we, is there any way to anticipate that and work backward from that during the budget season? Or like, no, I feel like I'm shaking your head.
You know, when most of the work will be done at the budget committee level, you'll get some reports along the way of where we're at, what things are looking like. But most of this is done at the, the budget committee level, so this is really. When I try to get your chance to give him a word of this is where we'd like you to go with the budget or.
Yeah.
You know, be on the lookout for slowing down and focusing on the buildings and.
Right, and I think that there are, there are priorities that are really important. And it, I feel like without an overall sense. It might be easy for us to kind of nickel and dime ourselves into another surprise. And so I guess that's like a concern of mine, just because I don't know, like, the totality of it yet, but I think I have a lot to learn.
The, uh, tax bills, which are going to be created by the end of the year, that, that's based on the draw that's needed for the building projects, correct? I mean, they're not, we don't automatically borrow all the money and have it. Uh, as a lien against the town or?
No, we'll be making a first full payment on the public safety bill.
Right. Yeah. Well, as John has suggested, I think it is, uh, appropriate to, I don't want to call it retrenchment necessarily, but I think, I think it is fiscal conservatism. That needs to kick in at this point. Um, we need to, uh. Certainly wrapping up this year. Maximize the unfunded. The undesignated fund balance if possible, and to be very careful about our expenditures for the remainder of this calendar year. Um, but being sure that we budget, uh, enough to make sure that we finish projects that we have said to start. Uh, I want to make sure that we have, uh. Sufficient money for the paving of Maple Street, for example, which I know that we can't even bid that thing this year because we won't, wouldn't get anybody to do it anyway. Concerned about whether we have enough to do that for next year. Want to make sure we have enough to, uh. Get the Shed Street demo project done, but that's bid next week, and so we'll hopefully know something at that point, which could have an effect on the budget process. And then, of course, we've talked briefly at the CIP about how we're going to do the Shaker Boulevard Bridge match, which is out there a few years. And as I just mentioned a second ago, I want to make sure that we have sufficient water well development plans. So that we're staying up with the needs and avoiding future issues that we experienced a little bit this summer. By having some redundancy in our capabilities. So I think it calls for some fiscal conservatism moving towards the end of the year and into the next budget process.
On the other hand, I would also think that we can't focus entirely on infrastructure, right? There are going to be some things that come up that, that have to do with people and, and. The sort of the, the character of the town, that always happens, right? Something always comes up and we, I think we have to be willing to say, okay. This is also important.
That's what I'd say is, is yeah, so for me, the priorities would be executing on projects. That we've already started and committed to. Uh, the building ones are at the obvious place, but also some of the maintenance of our existing facilities, like the. Eve on this building, uh, there's a lot of maintenance items that, that need to be done. I'd like to see that. Not be a, a huge part of it, see that continue to, to happen. Um, and then on the. What, what are we doing to prepare for the future? We have a number of things like. The potential changes of Route four, which shouldn't have any budgetary impact in the next year. Uh, like, that's a pretty big. Project for us to talk about, but it's, that's a labor project within existing town staff, not a new budget item. You know, we've got, um, a new program that, that sounds like it's going to be started with. Community nursing, that's not going to have a budget impact in the next couple of years, but. Um, we want to make sure that we're doing the things to. You know, monitor that, make sure it's a success, hopefully. So I guess the, the non-budget things, it seems like there's enough priorities that are new and exciting that are not budget related. And the budget related stuff for me is largely execution on the projects we've already started. Because we're right in the middle of them and we don't want to get distracted.
I think we've sort of committed ourselves to, uh, have a, a, a robust discussion about our ambulance system.
Yeah.
And who knows where that could end.
Yeah, but, but I think that's another good example of something that's going to take a year of discussion, that's not going to have an impact on next year's budget. But we have a lot of things like that, that we need to get our, get ahead of. As well. So that we can make smart decisions when they actually do come up.
Right, so it's really a, a long-term planning issue. It's not just this budget season. You know, looking at the next five years anyway, what are we? What do we anticipate? Where are we headed?
Working on.
Yeah, there's a lot of good work going on.
And that might be, I mean, that's, that's really what I'm hearing. So we're going to focus on what we've committed to do. And we'll work through this strategic planning and some other planning to see what we're going to do a couple of years.
Yes.
Yeah. That's it. Any other comments? Questions? All right, did you get what you needed?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Good guidance.
Um, acceptance of FHWA byways grant. So this is the grant for a. Uh, pedestrian. There's bike path along four A between. The bridge and La Salette. You have any discussion of accepting the grant?
Yeah, it's the main street parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not just the.
No, the, the grant, that's more the grant piece that separated it mentally. But yes, that's me doing much of the counter. But yes, it includes the parking along Main Street at Lakeside Park as well.
I know we don't want to necessarily talk about the match at this particular time, but a couple of. Simple questions that I'm hoping you can guide me on. Will in-kind effort be allowed as part of the match?
I do not believe so, but I can get a little bit deeper into the guidance document.
And how many years could the unfunded balance be used to pay that match?
Um, that project has a timeframe of needing to be completed by twenty twenty nine.
And so unfunded balance between now and fiscal year twenty nine. Parts of that could be used.
Maybe, yeah. We'd have to look at it and how the project's unfolding. It's hard to say unfunded. Balance would be used for years. We don't know how much is going to roll in there every year. And we don't know how the spending of this project's going to come out. It would happen. Over a couple of years, I would guess, but can't take money from the undesignated fund. Unless we set up a capital reserve and just squirrel a little way for this project.
I understand.
So.
Discussion for another day.
Yeah, so we have multiple sources. I mean, we have the undesignated fund balance. We can talk about it as a, a capital improvement. There's, there's many different places that this could come from.
Is that more discussion and sustained emotion?
I move, uh, to authorize town manager or their designee to accept the byways grant awarded by the Federal Highways Administration. With a total estimated project course cost of nine hundred and eighteen thousand and twenty one dollars and twenty six cents. Consisting of a town match of a hundred eighty three thousand, six hundred four dollars and twenty six cents. And hereby authorize the town manager or their designees to take such action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Oh, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is four to zero. Right, proposed leaf blower purchased.
Hey, so I can talk a little bit about this and Jeremy's on teams to help guide you through and give you more, more clarity if you need. Jeremy came to me and I talked with him and Jim about purchasing a, a large turbine style leaf blower. We do have a smaller one right now that goes on our small John Deere tractor, but this would be a, a much bigger one that they could slide into the back of a pickup. It would do a lot to keep the ditches clean and being in a pickup and of the size that it is would make it where they could. Go around in the fall and keep the leaves and sticks and stuff out of the ditches prior to, to winter time. They could do it multiple times. In talking with them, it was not something that was budgeted. It wasn't brought to the CIP, but Jeremy had used them in. Previous places that he'd worked and thought it would be a good addition to our fleet. So we talked a little bit and he had some money set aside that he had through savings, um, some of the savings were the. The brine solution and pretreatment and stuff that he did that saved us some money and different things he's done, but he didn't have enough to buy the. The entire leaf blower. So we went to the CIP committee at their meeting last week. And received permission, unanimous permission to spend five thousand dollars from the CIP if approved by the select board. And the rest of the funds would come from the, the twenty twenty three budget. So we're, we're looking at that. The, the other thing I added on here, and Jeremy could clarify this a little more, but when we look through. The, the few companies that actually provide this style blower. One company, the Buffalo Brand, really stood out as being a much superior product. And then they also had a ten-year warranty compared to the one and two-year warranties of the other ones. Um, Jeremy's done some work since then. And one of our local distributors here, um, cannot be the supplier of this, but they are more than happy to be the. The service technician and they do do the warranty work for the Kohler engine, so those would have on it. So with that, we're also asking if it would be the select board. If the select board would approve to just move forward purchasing the Buffalo Brand, because it's such a superior product that we think it'd be a. Waste of staff time and town money to go through the RFP process. With that, Jeremy's here to speak with you.
Uh, I really have nothing further to add. You did a pretty good job there, Ed. The quote that I have for the Buffalo turbine is, of the three quotes that I already have, is. Um, the quote that I have for the Buffalo turbine is of the three quotes that I already have is, is slightly less than the other two. And. It is actually in stock, so if you, if the select board chooses to move forward, that's something we could have inbound this fall early.
Partially related question. Do we have a place to store it when it's not in use?
We will, we'll store it inside. Yes.
I move we uh, go ahead with this. Do we need a more formal motion there?
I would, yeah.
They have one written down. Oh. Suggested one here if you want to.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It gets all the dollar figures correct.
Authorize the expenditure of five thousand dollars on the capital improvement program capital reserve fund. With remainder of the funds coming from the twenty twenty three budget. For the purchase of a Buffalo turbine leaf blower. And further authorize a town manager or their designate to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary to complete the purchase.
A second.
I have one more quick question. So when you say that the funds are coming, the remainder of the funds are coming from the twenty twenty three budget, but this wasn't planned? So where does that actually come from?
It'll come from the highway budget. It's a, it's a bottom line budget. So when we approve it in town meeting, we're just approving the total overall expenditure, so they'll be.
Not everything's like.
They'll be looking from some different lines. Some of it's from. Personnel savings that we've had through the year. Some of it's overtime savings from the pre-treatment, not having to pull people in during some of the storms and. Just little bits and pieces here and there throughout the budget. We were able to save the, just a little over five thousand dollars to make the purchase.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too.
Chipper funding mechanism.
I'm turning this over to Lisa. I can explain if she's been intimate with this one.
So the, the chipper was totaled and we got insurance money for the depreciating value of it. That went into the general fund in twenty twenty two. We ordered a new chipper. It did not arrive until twenty twenty three, so that's where the expense lies. Two different years. Um, we cannot just credit the revenue line because it came in in a different year. So in order to get the funds. Properly accounted for. We would want the, ideally, the. Forty six thousand nine hundred dollars, I believe it was, that we got for insurance money that went into the general fund would come back out of the general fund. To pay for the chipper. Um. And the rest would come from the CIP fund. This requires that the budget committee also approve the use of. Undesignated fund balance for this, because we'd have to include it in the budget. We just want to make sure that the board of selectmen or the select board is on board with having the full amount come from CIP. Uh, there's a short-term loan. And then we would have an article or include in the budget. Um, the expense uh, from the unassigned fund balance of the forty six thousand nine hundred dollars. And have that go back into the CIP fund. So it's just a short-term loan from uh, the CIP fund and.
I'll explain it a little bit differently, yeah. This is the nice budget complexity of government. Accounting. It doesn't work like a private business. So what would happen is it went into. Revenue in twenty twenty three. At the end of this budget year. It's unexpected revenue. It'll fall into fund balance, so that same insurance payment is sitting in fund balance. What we're asking for is this year to be able to spend CIP money to cover the cost of the chipper. And then that money that's sitting in undesigned fund balance will then be allocated in next year's budget to repay the CIP. So it's just a. Kind of going through the loop. It's a, it's an auditing thing that we really need to do and. So that's what we're asking for approval to use the CIP funds to do that, and then we'll talk with the budget committee about taking those undesigned funds and putting them back into CIP.
And was this discussed at the CIP meeting?
It was.
That's supposed to have.
Yep. Um, okay, so I think it makes sense from an accounting standpoint. The only really small risk is that. Voters would not vote to do it. Um, right, because this would be one of those town meeting. It would just be in part of the whole overall budget.
Yeah, what we did last year was the undesigned fund projects. We just.
Right.
Put a revenue source from undesigned fund into the budget and then we put expense lines throughout the budget.
Yeah, okay, that's what happens in a. Yeah. I think it makes sense.
You don't need a motion for this, Lee.
Yes, we do.
We do.
We need authorization to spend CIP funds.
Entertain a motion and it's uh, forty six thousand highlighter? Or would it be the? Is it the entire purpose?
We want the entire.
The entire.
Sixty four thousand, a hundred and five dollars and seventy five cents.
The motion, I think, has to be the part that's involved on here.
Correct.
John?
Uh. I'm confused already.
A motion to expend.
I, I'll, I'll read.
Sixty four.
It's not a, it's not written as a motion.
It is.
No, but I'll just, so I make a motion that with the recommendation from the CIP committee. Concurrent from the budget committee and approval of the select board. The entire purchase price of sixty four thousand, four hundred five dollars and seventy five cents. Would be requested of the trustees of trust funds from the CIP CRF in two thousand twenty three. At the same time, it would be proposed to budget forty six thousand nine hundred dollars in the twenty twenty four budget to come from the general fund balance. To reimburse the CIP CRF.
I think one slightly.
Yeah, man.
Yes.
That the removal of the approval from the budget committee to spend CIP funds, so we can go ahead and get that bill paid.
Beautiful. Don't you want to reread it?
No.
We're just.
We'll strike through the part concurrents from the budget committee.
Correct, because we have to pay for it regardless.
Yes.
Well done. That part will just be the payback. The worst thing that'll happen is sixty four thousand dollars will be spent from the CIP fund because we.
A second.
Okay, print the section. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passes four to zero. An acceptance of donations to the community nursing trust fund for the amount of two thousand dollars. Any discussion?
All but not.
I mean, that's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to entertain a motion to accept with. Gratitude.
I will make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of two thousand dollars and that's going to bank into the community nursing program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, administrative items, is there anything to discuss there? I don't think so. Uh, public comments, is there anything? Any comments from the public? Once one agenda. Go ahead, Dan.
Just, it's an issue and I don't have an answer for it. But. Trash on Main Street is becoming ridiculous. People put their toders out. With the toter put out there last Thursday, well, what will be this Wednesday's pickup? With the trash overflowing and the crows eating away at it come Friday morning.
And that's almost across the street from the town hall.
Offices, exactly.
I've been there.
I don't know what we can do about it, but at some point, people got to take their toders in.
Right.
And I thought we had said that earlier, that. From a health standpoint.
John mentioned this last year, as a matter of fact. And it's a very valid concern. And I wonder whether, I'm sorry to say, is this a need for an ordinance?
We have an ordinance.
We have, don't we have?
We have an ordinance, yes.
Do we have an ordinance? And is it, and it's a, is it a finable item by the police?
I think so. There's a process that they go through.
Yeah.
Then I, I think that we need to ask the chief to.
Right.
I mean, especially when it's on our sidewalk.
Right.
Yes.
But you can't get around the toders without the smell of the trash.
Yeah. And it does not enhance the main street of our town.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
The one thing that I will mention so people know is that if it's back off the sidewalk, it's technically on their property. It doesn't say it needs to be put behind them. It's something that's going to be out in the fight away.
Just can't be in the public.
And so how far under the lawn does the town's right of way go?
Depends where you're at on the street.
It's really interesting, right? Because we are very discouraged from having like bird feeders and things out during certain times of the year because it could draw like unwanted wildlife visitors. But overflowing toders, I don't know if that creates the same challenge. Chip, Colin and I have discussed this language.
There's not a lot we can do about either of those if they're on private property.
Are there other public comments? Yeah, like and I believe uh, we have a. Non-public.
We don't need to do anything about the solar exemptions, right? They're just automatic?
Yeah, correct.
They're resigning.
Yeah, we saw.
Okay, just sign them and that's it. Okay, great.
One item, the Las Salette patient that we need to know, if you want to go, you can let us know later. Um, we need RSVP by the first of September.
Okay, I would say this out loud so that if other people listening are interested. So as everyone knows, Las Salette is unfortunately closing down. Uh, and they will be having a series of festivities. Starting Saturday, September sixteenth, and then following on Sunday, Monday and Tuesday culminating with. A feast day of Our Lady of La Salette at eleven AM on Tuesday, September ninth. And it's obviously open to the public, uh, for anybody who is interested in attending. And with that, uh, we do have some. Non, oh, we have a non-public session. I would entertain a motion. To enter, to enter a non-public session. By RSA ninety one dash A colon three relative to the review and disclosure of non-public minutes.
I move that we move into non-public. Uh, following RSA ninety one dash eight colon three. Is that eleven?
Two M.
Two M.
Two M. Thank you.
Is this a roll call vote? Does this have to be a roll call vote? Or just?
No, I think. Any action that we.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, thank you very much to everyone for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.